... pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is a very special presentation from our sister city of Nishiwaki. Sonia, were you gonna... Okay, Roger.
Yeah.
Welcome, Roger.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Roger Richard, and I am the chairman of the Renton Sister Cities Association and also the Renton-Nishiwaki Sister City Program. Matter of fact, I was part of the first delegation to Nishiwaki back in 1969. I was a little bit younger then. Not too much. I am here this evening for a presentation along with a message from the mayor of Nishiwaki. We have several people to introduce, and Sonia Mailander will close out after our presentation and review for you some future upcoming Nishiwaki events. To start out, I want to introduce Brian Chu. Brian is the cultural and educational project manager for the Hiyogo Business and Cultural Center in Seattle. After joining the HBCC in April of 2013, he has focused on helping develop and continue the longstanding sister state and sister city connection between Washington State and Hiyogo Prefecture in Japan, as well as planning and the logistics for numerous year-round cultural and educational events. Recently, Brian has been working with the Renton... our Renton Sister Cities Association to help strengthen the city's ties with Nishiwaki City in Japan. Brian is a Seattle native who has lived in Japan for many years, both as a student and studying abroad and working as a professional. It is my pleasure, then, tonight, to introduce him. He will then introduce the rest of our program. Brian?
Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Mayor Law and council, for having us here tonight. As Roger said, it's been wonderful to be able to work with him and the rest of the Renton Sister City Association. I've been reminded that even in this age of technology that we have, it's really important to remember the face-to-face relationships, the handshakes and the hugs, and it's been a pleasure working with this association. So today, I'd like to introduce three more guests. One is the executive director of our association, Hiyogo Business and Cultural Center. His home town is Nishiwaki, so it's a very important relationship for him. Following that will be Ms. Sarah Johnson. She's the program coordinator for the Japanese Queen Scholarship Organization of Washington. These young ladies recently took a trip to Hiyogo and Nishiwaki. And then finally, Mr. Terry Nakano, who's the president of the Association of Organization, the Queens Organization, and led a trip to Nishiwaki and Hiyogo. I actually have a photo here I'd like to quickly just have everybody take a look at for some context.
If you would.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So without further ado, Mr. Norihisa Mizuguchi, executive director of the Hiyogo Business and Cultural Center.
Thank you, Brian, Roger, and Mayor Law, Assembly council members, and citizens of Renton. As Brian mentioned, my hometown is Nishiwaki, the city in Hiyogo, Japan. For me, the relationship between Renton and Nishiwaki holds a special meaning. After coming to Seattle as a director of HBCC in 2012, I have been involved with each of the cities in Washington State that have sister cities in Hiyogo. However, there is no greater pride for me professionally and personally than to be a part of the celebration between my hometown and this wonderful city of Renton. This year in March, the Japanese Queen Scholarship Organization of Washington sent four young Japanese-American women to Hiyogo, Japan, on a goodwill visit to learn more about Japan and their own heritage. This included a visit to Renton's sister city in Hiyogo, Nishiwaki. Mr. Terry Nakano and Ms. Sarah Johnson will speak about that, too.
Thank you.
Dennis Law, thank you so much for having me, council members, and everyone from the city of Renton. It gives... I am Sarah Johnson of the Japanese Queen Scholarship Organization of Washington. I am the International Relations Program Director for this organization. Our mission of the scholarship is to enhance the female... Japanese females who are going into college, to help enhance their education, to give them a goal into becoming ambassadors for a wonderful community here in Washington. My goal for the International Relations Program is pretty much to provide the participants a firsthand experience of the origins of their culture, of where Japanese Americans really came from, the roots of Japan, and to expand their business and personal networks also on the global scale, and to develop them into becoming ambassadors for the community here in Washington, as well as to represent Washington State in Japan. This is my third... this was my third time, actually, taking these participants to Japan. Every year is a different trip. We always started at the city of Kobe, and we expand out to two sister cities that we have connections to here in Washington. And we feel that sending representatives from Washington State to Japan is going to further enhance this wonderful connection and relationship that we have established for many years between Washington and Hiyogo Prefecture. This particular... this last year in March was really special for us because we celebrated not only the past 50 years of Washington State and Hiyogo relationship, but the 45th year between Renton and Nishiwaki. So it was a wonderful time. I got this lovely croisage from the city of Nishiwaki. The people there were wonderful, and I would like to hand the mic over to Terry Nakano, the president of the organization, to talk about the trip. This was actually the first time that he joined me on this wonderful trip, so thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Good evening. My name is Terry Nakano. I'm president of the Japanese Queen Scholarship Organization of Washington. Mayor Law, members of the council, it's really an honor to be here this evening. As the other speakers have noted that I won't go into detail, but the organization that I belong to has been in existence since 1960, and I've been with the organization since 1976, so it's been a few years. But it's my... it was my first trip to Hiyogo Prefecture, and to act as official messengers for the city of Renton and Seattle was really an honor, and I can't tell you the wonderful hospitality that was accorded to us by Nishiwaki and the mayor's office. It was outstanding. The high school and junior high schools that we visited rolled out the red carpet, and we got to know the students, we talked to the students, and one young man in the junior high school gave his whole presentation, welcome speech, in English.
Oh.
And he tried really hard to make everything perfect, and it was really heartwarming to see him try so hard to give us a warm welcome. And at the high school, we got to join the classes in kendo and tea ceremony, and it was really nice to see that the cultural aspect of the education in Japan is still continuing, and it's really gratifying, because I know that in Japan, a lot of things, they like Western things, but to preserve their culture, such as tea ceremony and kendo, was really nice to know. So the staff, the students, and the city hall really gave us a warm, wonderful welcome, and it was really a wonderful trip for myself and as well as our young ladies and Sarah. So I thank you for the opportunity to be official messengers for the city of Renton to present the letter to the mayor, and in turn, I have a letter for Mayor Law.
Okay. I'll come down here.
Is there anything we get one photo, like, right here?
Sure.
Yeah.
How...
Thank you.
Just drop your knee.
Next.
So I'll give my greeting to our Mr. Mayor and council, and of course, our citizens at home and here tonight. Sonia Mailander, Community Relations and Events for the city of Renton, and staff liaison to our Renton Sister Cities Association. In closing our presentation tonight, we are excited to leave you with the announcement that we will be welcoming a citizens' delegation from Nishiwaki this October, so later this year, in celebration of the 45th anniversary. The delegation will be with us from October 18th to the 21st, so please mark your calendars, and we hope that you will join us for many of the activities. We'll let you know as we roll those out. We also invite our Renton community members to join in the planning process and be a part of not only the Renton-Nishiwaki Committee, but the Sister Cities Association. We hope people will like the Renton Sister Cities Association Facebook page, and we also post meeting updates and information on the Renton-Nishiwaki Sister City page of the city's website at rentonwa.gov. There's also email and phone contact information for both Roger and myself on the web page. Any questions?
Thanks, Sonia. Thank you very much. It's very nice to have you here. Several of us, I know Randy and I have been to Nishiwaki, Terry Brier's been to Nishiwaki. It is, as Sarah described, absolutely a wonderful city. It's an experience that's hard to even articulate, because when you talk about red carpet, I mean, from the moment you get off the airplane till the moment you leave, you are treated like royalty over there. It is absolutely so wonderful. It's a beautiful city, beautiful people, it's a great country, very nice place. I urge everybody to visit, because it is really a special treat, very nice place, so...
So we welcome others to join in our planning efforts, and then we're looking to put together a trip to go to Nishiwaki maybe next April, April 2015.
I also want to say thank you to Roger, who's been very, very instrumental in working hard with the volunteers for our sister city arrangement with Nishiwaki, so it's good to have you here tonight, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, and I'm gonna see if Peter Renner can follow that.
Go ahead, Peter.
Good evening, Mayor Law, council president person and council members. For the record, I am Peter Renner, the city's facilities director, and with me is Greg Smith, the facilities director for the King County Library System. Tonight, we would like to give you a brief update on the Renton Library over the Cedar River. As you will recall, KCLS is responsible for the project management and construction. I am the city's liaison with KCLS for the project. It has been some time since the design phase update, and you will recall that Ewan Wang, the finance administrator, reported the results in April of the special audit that council requested for both library projects. At that time, the audit consultant had expressed some concern about material costs, so Greg will give you the latest information on product schedule, project schedule, and bid status, and I will give details about the temporary library site. And he will give you those details about the temporary library site. Then I will discuss the main issues related to the library closure that city staff has been working on, and we can answer any questions that you have. So Greg, if you'd like to hop up here.
Good evening, Mayor and council member. Thank you for allowing this time to come and update you on the Renton Library. My name is Greg Smith, director of facilities and development for the King County Library System. So the project has officially started. We received construction... we opened construction bids on May 20th. We had a total of six bidders. The low bid came in at $5.1 million, and the high bid was at $5.9 million, so a pretty good spread. The engineer's budget was at $6.2 million, so we are well within the budget for the project. We're in the process of finalizing contract with a successful bidder, who was Construction Enterprises and Contractors out of Tacoma. We are issuing a notice to proceed on June 30th. Contract duration will be 365 days, with a substantial completion date of June 30th, 2015. Final completion date will be... completion will be 45 days later, with a target completion date of August 14th, 2014. Obviously, it's a bit early to tell, but we anticipate opening the library in September of 2015, as things stand today. KCLS is working closely with the community services and contracted to mitigate impact as much as possible to the park. The entire south lot will be fenced off for staging, and there will be times when the parks of the north side will be fenced off as well. The south lot, meaning just the parking area that's in front of the library, not in front of 200 Mill Building. We are advertising in the local paper about the closure this week, and we'll have signs posted, as well as information on the KCLS internet. The library will be relocating to a temporary site located at 64 Raynor Avenue South in about a 2,000-square-foot space. The last day of operation will be Sunday, June 22nd. It's only a couple of weeks away, and opening the temp site on Wednesday, June 25th. The temp site will have some computers, small collections, and hold's pickup, and the hours will be 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 10:00 to 6:00 on Friday, 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, and 1:00 to 5:00 on Sunday. During the closure, we have a huge amount of outreach activities scheduled for June through August. We have summer learning, let's read, deep dive with the schools, as well as continuing children's, teen, and adult services at Renton Highlands Library. We will also continue to have library to-go runs during the closure, and after August, we are negotiating for two storytimes within the Renton Library service area. They will take place off-site and have not yet been finalized. We will also spend this period looking for new outreach opportunities. If time's allowed, I can go into some of the highlights of the building features. Is that all right?
Sure.
So as you know, the building was built in 1965-66, and some of the new design features are... there'll be new floor-to-ceiling glazed curtain wall. Will let in more natural light and create more views to the river. There'll be a new metal canopy at the interior perimeter of the building, will provide solar protection. There will be exposed roof structure at the interior. The volume of the main collections area will feel more generous. In other words, you'll look up and see some of the structure and things in the building. We'll have new high-performance wall and roof assemblies to improve energy efficiency and thermal control, and comfort, for that matter. We'll have a large meeting room, multipurpose space with natural light, sliding door panels, blackout shades, and storage space. This will allow the meeting room to be used for patrons during the day when meetings aren't in use. It's what we've done in a lot of the other libraries, where you can have that extra meeting room space to be used during the day for reading, studying, whatever you want, when there's not a meeting being held. It's worked out pretty good. And it's also be glazed and closed, so staff will have good visibility inside the space. They can monitor what's happening in there. We'll have three small study rooms for patrons' use. We'll have increased electrical service to support more computer stations and study tables with integrated power. We're gonna have outlets all over the place for devices to be plugged in, things like that. Site improvements, we'll have new entry plaza on the west side, integrated with Liberty Park Pass and landscaping on the east side, new enclosure to hide trash recycling and mechanical equipment. There'll be significant structural upgrades, which will include the new auger cast piles and steel brace frames, will bring the building into compliance with current seismic codes. Electrical conservation features, we will use LED and fluorescent lighting, which are the most energy-efficient lighting options available today. We're targeting a 10% or better below energy code for the lighting. We will have daylight dimming controls in all daylight zones and occupied sensors in non-active rooms, so things will come on and off. When the sun's bright and all that sunlight's coming in, the lights shut down, dimmed down, turn off in some cases. Some of the mechanical conservation features, the building will use an efficient natural gas condensing boiler for heating. Duckwork and piping will be sized to reduce pumping and fan energy. Cooling equipment will be specified with efficiencies exceeding code. Some of the thermal conversation features, the existing building is not very well insulated and has a low-performance glazing system. The proposed new building envelope will significantly improve the thermal performance of existing building. It will consist of high-performance fenestration systems, opaque wall systems, and roof assemblies that meet or exceed current Washington State energy code requirements. So that's about all I had to update on. Is there some questions?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Council, have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
I don't have any questions, but I just have a concern that as I look at the agenda, the agenda says park board, and I was not anticipating that we were gonna get an update on the library based on the agenda that we put out. So I'm just wondering, you know, did we properly disclose to the public that we were gonna be having this conversation tonight?
It's an update. I'll take responsibility for that. Ultimately, the final preparation of the agenda rests with the mayor's office, and that was our fault. We can... I've already talked to Greg, and if we feel it necessary, we can certainly have KCLS back to give this update again. We wanted to make sure that the council, and at least the public, heard as much as possible, in the sense this is televised, we'll certainly get this out. Because of the closure, we want to give as much notice as we can, so we wanted to have Greg come and present to you. But we can have KCLS come back with notice, so members of the public who want to be here, specifically in attendance, can certainly do that. I think it's as an update, there's no action, obviously, required on our part, so there's not a violation in the sense of we're taking action that wasn't noticed. But in the spirit of trying to be open, we can certainly have KCLS come back and provide this information.
Well, I would recommend that, given the interest community-wide...
Sure.
...and the sensitivity of the history of this topic, that it would be, you know, absolutely required, that we properly disclose, make sure the public's aware of it, everyone's interested in what we're doing and what the progress is, and that we make sure that... I would anticipate that had the community known that we were gonna be having this conversation tonight, there'd be more people here in the room because of it, with possible questions after, you know, or during the council meeting, so...
We'll certainly make... reschedule that. I think the other thing, if I could, Mr. Mayor, Greg, you might have an update on the Highlands Library as well? You want to provide any info?
I don't have one yet. We're still waiting on permit, and there were some design comments we had to make some changes on, so I don't really have a schedule update on that one yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
Did I hear you right that the library is going to close in less than two weeks?
Yes, it is.
And so are you coming back next week? Because otherwise, it'll be closed before we let the community know.
At this point in time, I have no arrangements to come back, but I certainly got it.
We arranged... we could probably arrange that for next week.
This seems to be...
I'm very surprised.
Yeah, this is troubling to me.
Fast with little notice.
Yeah, this is... that's a pretty major thing, that, you know, we're gonna be closing the major library, the larger library in our city, and we're just finding out about that tonight, and we didn't have disclosures out in time for the community members to be here to become aware of it at the very least.
But there is... it's... there is gonna be another location that's gonna be open at the same time.
We understand that, but it's about early notification, so the people are aware, they can get their questions answered, they can become knowledgeable about what's gonna happen, and they can plan accordingly.
Yeah, I might add that we do... we will be advertising in the local paper, I think I did mention that, we have signs posted, and there'll be information on our internet site as well, so regular users of the library should be well aware of the closure and timeframe and the temporary location.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person?
Well, I remember an article in the Renton Reporter stating that there was... there would be an alternate location.
That's not my concern.
So, you know, there always was out that it was gonna be that, and I don't know if they even told us at the time where the location was gonna be. The other side of the story is, is when you get a bid at $5.1 million, which is way under what we anticipated, you want to move fast to keep that thing going. And I... you know, it's unfortunate that there was a miswording, because I thought the park board was gonna be here tonight, along with everybody else, so hopefully, we'll have it for people to come in and comment on next Monday night.
Next Monday, yeah.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President?
I would say, I... you know, I don't think that city council chambers has to be where information gets out to the public. I mean, we've got better channels than that, so... but more I'd be concerned with, you know, if we do have a date, let's use all those channels immediately to get the word out. I'd like to think we're popular, but I don't think, you know, people tune in that much.
You're absolutely right.
But we should definitely get media reports and let people know what's coming.
And I would just follow up. That certainly has been, I think, KCLS's intention. This was... we wanted to schedule this for tonight so that you all would know, but as Greg said, KCLS is proceeding with giving notifications, doing everything they can. We got great bids, we're excited about that. As quickly as they got confirmation that they could proceed, they're working with the alternative site and all of that. So we're trying to get the word out as best we can. Construction is always... it's gonna be inconvenient anytime you have a construction involves closing an existing facility and opening another one. There'll be some folks, there'll be some adjustments, but we're excited about the ultimate end product, which is gonna be, I think, an absolutely gorgeous facility that we're gonna be proud of for many, many, many years. We'll have a little bit of, as I said, inconvenience during construction. We will work hard to make sure that everybody knows how to get to the interim site that KCLS has selected, and as indicated, again, we'll have KCLS back next week to repeat the same information for those who might want to come specifically and get information. And the fault of the nobby on agenda does not rest with KCLS. That's ultimately my responsibility.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I just wanted to know if anybody knew how far away the Fairwood KCLS is from... I don't know what their completion date is, but they obviously look like they're still in the middle of construction. Any idea?
Yeah, that's targeted for the fall of this year, so we don't have an exact opening date, but we're targeting late September, early October.
I do look like it's a long way off yet. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Greg? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
I have no reports tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next is audience comment. We have two people signed up to address the council, one according to name. Please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. We have a timer next to the city clerk. First is Steven Sidlosky.
Good evening, Renton council members. I am laybrother Steven Gerard Sidlosky. My voting residence is Cincinnati, Ohio, the queen city, and I'm in King County. Isn't that wonderful? Just to give you a little bit of my background, I traveled here to Seattle over 25 years ago. Back then, I was a commissioned... or becoming a commissioned officer in the United States Navy, so I'm aware of your Seafair Festival, Puget Sound, and navigating, of course, the Pacific Ocean during that timeframe. I did my undergrad at Purdue University in engineering, electrical. I did a master's at Xavier University with a focus in business administration, and today I am now a third-order Franciscan, traveling the country, giving all of you a new possibility in your fine city of Renton. I'm just actually visiting some friends here, and I'm taking a moment, of course, to do what I love to do, and that's to talk to city councils, so thank you very much. I'm delighted to have five minutes. I usually only get about two or three minutes as I travel the country. Today, I'd like to talk to you about a new possibility in the United States, something for all of you to start pondering. I'm not gonna give you a last-minute notice. I'm gonna give you some fresh moment to start thinking about this new possibility. The new possibility that I'm going to talk about is a concept that's now sprouted into a new level of what we call citizen overlay zone. United States Navy, so I'm aware of your Seafair Festival, Puget Sound, and navigating, of course, the Pacific Ocean during that timeframe. I did my undergrad at Purdue University in engineering, electrical. I did a master's at Xavier University with a focus in business administration. And today, I am now a Third Order Franciscan, traveling the country, giving all of you a new possibility in your fine city of Renton. I'm just actually visiting some friends here, and I'm taking a moment, of course, to do what I love to do, and that's to talk to city councils. So thank you very much. I'm delighted to have five minutes. I usually only get about two or three minutes as I travel the country. Today, I'd like to talk to you about a new possibility in the United States, something for all of you to start pondering. I'm not gonna give you a last-minute notice. I'm gonna give you some fresh moment to start thinking about this new possibility. The new possibility that I'm going to talk about is a concept that's now sprouted into a new level of what we call citizen overlay zones. For those of you who know a little bit about zoning codes and zoning law, you can appreciate municipal zoning. What I'm trying to do is present a new possibility in our society where we add a new chapter into our zoning codes. And I'm delighted to let you know that I've already had a nice conversation today with a Lorene, is it Nicolay, and what an outstanding person she is. She was very professional and answered all my questions today, so you always give credit to her credit is due, and she did a fine job. She let me know that your Title IV, your Chapter II, your Section 060 defines your zoning codifiers for your wonderful city of Renton. And she also let me know that you have about 12 overlay zones that encompass your beautiful city of Renton. And then I think I also learned that you have a population here of about 95,540 people. Of course, that was as of April 1st of 2013, give or take a few people. What I'm trying to do is to let all of you know that today, society has great concerns, and society and citizens, and yourself are citizens, have great concerns that, well, maybe we are not quite getting some things done. We're not fine-tuning things the way we can be. Well, my solution for some of the fine tuning is citizen overlay zones, and I actually call an element of these citizen overlay zones life peace zones, okay? If you look at the leaflet that I've provided you, I'm just gonna talk about four levels of new citizen overlay zones, if you open it up. And we're just gonna get right to the point. A life peace zone concept is a citizen overlay zoning codifier. A new designator would be created in cities throughout the country, possibly even here in Renton. A Level 1 citizen overlay zone, or a life peace zone, would preserve the present preferential collective character of the good citizens that desire no life-ending medical procedures be performed in the womb of a woman in a designated legal overlay zone. A Level 2 citizen overlay life peace zone would preserve the present preferential collective character of the good citizens that desire no life-ending medical procedures be performed on a person seeking to terminate their life in a designated legal overlay zone. A Level 3 citizen overlay life peace zone preserves the present preferential collective character of the good citizens that desire no animal research be performed in a designated legal overlay zone, for those of us who are animal lovers, too. And a Level 4 citizen overlay life peace zone speaks very close to all of our hearts right now. It preserves the present preferential collective character of the good citizens that desire no establishment of business for the sale of firearms in a designated legal overlay zone.
I'm sorry, your five minutes are up.
Okay. Thank you all very much, and you now know this future possibility for citizen overlay zones.
Okay, thank you. Next is Howard McComber.
Hey, we'll see if we can make this magic happen. Hey, I pushed the button, but it didn't work. It's red now.
Push it again.
Ah, we did. Howard McComber, I live in the Renton Highlands. Before I do this, I gotta talk for one second. I think that the gentleman who came here with the information on the library, I think it'd be really nice if we put that information, the bid information, all that other information, on the web.
It is.
So, is it there now?
I-
You checked it?
If I, yes. While he was talking, I looked to see how much information was out there about the closing, and it is all on the website.
Okay. Do we have the bids down, too? The amount of the money?
Uh, they might be in another location. It did, it did just say that the bids had happened and all of that. It didn't-
Yeah, I gotta-
Probably on another location of the website. It does say.
Okay.
We'll make sure we summarize it. King County Library System, sorry, we're taking your time. But KCLS is, that's their bid award, but we can, we can certainly present it. It's a great bid, $400,000 bid. It's a great deal.
Well, I think, well, I think some of those will answer some of the questions that people have. I agree on the speed. When you get a good bid, it's important, but people need to know, hey, this is a good bid, and this is why it is, and this is what's happening. Just the information. We get the information out, it's gonna be very nice. If we don't get the information out, we'll have a lot of people here Monday. I can promise you that. So, it's important we get the information out clear and precise, and I think that that's good. We're dealing on level of trust and good fellowship here, but we need a lot of information in a hurry. I appreciate that. Number two, we have, right here, next week, the celebration of the first anniversary of the Center of Hope, which is downstairs. We'd just like to invite everyone to come. We'll have special talks and other things at 4:00, which would be wonderful, but anytime during the day, 10:00 till 6:00. You can come get a special tour and just take a look and see what's there. We have some wonderful things happening. This city has a wonderful collection of people who are trying to help everywhere. It's just wonderful, and I appreciate that. I think, going back to that library, we just need to check and see when that's opened, and really let people know where the library's gonna be, that the people can go to. That needs to be very clear. I had questions about that this morning at breakfast, which was over at Harambe. So that's one of those things. There's a lot of opportunity to help out in our citizens. There's a lot of education that needs to take place, and a lot of communication, and just help out. Anybody who'd like to give a hand, to those who are less fortunate, there's websites you can go to. An easy one is REACH, R-E-A-C-H. Just Google it, and it'll come up. Renton Ecumenical. To Renton Ecumenical, it will come. There's too many businesses with REACH. Renton Ecumenical, it will come up, and we have a lot of people who are helping out, and it's wonderful. I see the activity, and I know that a lot of you are extremely involved in helping us out, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you, and we'll see you there next Monday.
Thanks, Howard. Next is the consent agenda. We have seven items for the council to consider. Are there any items that council members would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, seeing on the move, the consent agenda be adopted as presented?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Unfinished business, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Palmer.
Yes.
Did I take that back? I have a committee of the whole report.
Committee of the whole committee report, fiscal sustainability and revenue option. The committee of the whole reviewed and considered the city's options to maintain quality public services and provide capital resources to preserve assets, leverage grants, and facilitate economic development, and hereby directs the administration to develop necessary legislation to implement a business and occupations tax effective January 1st, 2016. The legislation shall minimize impact on small businesses and be as simple and convenient for taxpayers to comply with as possible. The committee further authorizes the administration to continue exploration and planning of a regional fire authority and to approve current fire and emergency medical services for Renton and participating communities. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
How do you view the committee report be adopted?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the committee of the whole report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Palmer.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Breyer?
Uh, yes, the finance committee has two reports.
Finance committee committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves for payment on June 9th, 2014, claim voucher 329278 through 329925, 11 wire transfers, and two payroll lines with benefit withholding payments totaling $11,585,227.77, and payroll vouchers including 1,457 direct deposits and 118 payroll checks totaling $3,226,878.6. This is signed by the vice chair and substitute members.
Yes, thank you to my, everyone, for taking over my committee board this afternoon. With that, I'd like to make the motion that council concur the finance committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next report from the finance committee is the advertising agreement with Ivors Incorporated. The finance committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to approve an advertising agreement with Ivors Incorporated for a 10-year term. The agreement provides $20,000 per year of direct revenue to the city. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the agreement. This too is signed by the vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms.-
I'd like to, I think this is exciting, that Ivors has signed up again for another 10-year period of time. With that, I'd like to make the motion that council concur with the finance committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, and Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business. Come here.
Okay, resolutions and ordinances? Looks like we have none of those, so we'll move on to new business. Mr. Person?
Uh, yes, the, committee of the whole will meet next Monday, June 16th. That's, seems scary that it's halfway through June. And two things on the agenda, community needs assessment and regional issues and updates. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Person. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I have a transportation committee, and I'm gonna look to my two members, Greg and Armando. In looking at how many items are on the agenda, and I talked with Greg Zimmerman, I'm wondering if you would be available to bump it up to 3:30?
I can, yes.
3:30 to 5?
Yes.
Does that work? Oh, okay, whip that out. Let me go through what we're gonna have, and I'll circle back to that. The meeting will be in the council conference room. There are three items listed on the agenda. The first is Northeast 31st Street Culvert Repair Project Replacement Alternative Bridge Bid Award. Second is 156th Avenue Southeast Corridor Referral. And the third is emerging issues in transportation, and this is where I think that some of these items may take some time. Maple Valley Highway Fast Traffic and Signage Concerns, Pass Through Traffic Survey Update, Lake Washington Boulevard Traffic Modeling Analysis Update, Grant Updates, and then Airport 80820 Lease Applications Received.
Yes.
So, we'll start at 3:30. We'll have it from 3:30 to 5. Thank you very much.
Problem.
I just am concerned, and we may have some members of the public that want to be present, and that is it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a Public Safety Committee meeting to announce for June 16th, Monday, June 16th, at 5:00 PM, and that will be in the council conference room. We've got one item on the agenda, Emergency Notification System Briefing, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, let's see. The Community Services Committee will be canceled for June 16th, and I would like to just mention a couple of events that I had the privilege to attend. One, over the weekend, and this was the Interfaith Celebration, which came from the legislation that was passed by Bob Hasagawa for the Days of Faith Bill. For those that don't know, this was a bill that provides public employees and students in public schools that they'll be allowed to take up to two days off each year for reasons of faith or conscience under legislation that passed, just passed session, which was well-received. It was at the Rainier Community Center. There were a number of electives there. Congressman Adam Smith was there, former Senator Claudia Kaufman was there, Bob Hasagawa, of course, and Teri Gashiama and her husband was there also. So, Renton was well-represented there with staff and council member. Great food celebration, and it was, they had about a half dozen spiritual leaders who made comments about, you know, the importance of having this kind of freedom to celebrate on days outside of mainstream celebratory days. So that was one of the events. Today, I was in Olympia, bumped into the guy down at the end of the podium down there, or the dais down there.
Was he working?
Uh, I don't think so. I think he was, he was just kinda hanging around, you know, hands in his pocket, you know.
I do that usually, hang around.
You know.
It's not like you guys could hang around together.
But the event was presented by the Washington State Supreme Court Minority and Justice Commission on Perceptions of Justice. Intriguing information. It was from about 8:30 till about 1:00. A number of people from the criminal justice community were there, and just went over just a large amount of data presented by three professors from outside of the state of Washington that did a survey, for those that are interested in looking at it, called Justice in Washington State Survey, that was done in 2012 but revised in 2014, that talked about the perception of justice. And it was very interesting information, very dynamic conversations, and I was happy to be there and learning more about what we can start talking about and thinking about in terms of creating equitable outcomes here in our own city. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Utility Committee will meet on June 16th at 4:30, and we will be discussing revision to the Renton Municipal Code 9-5.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Breyer?
I have no committees to announce.
Okay, and Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Park Development Committee meeting for June 12th has been canceled. I also want to mention an event I was able to attend yesterday, actually. Antonio Gonzalez put on a lemonade stand for childhood cancer research at Cascade Elementary School, and went there probably right, well, around 11:00, and it was packed. Could barely find any parking, and our firefighters were there, and Blitz was there, and they had bouncy houses. And from pictures I saw on Facebook, looked like Mr. Mayor and council president were there as well. Great event, not sure how much money they raised, but Antonio had cancer once, and he's in remission, and just want to give big props to he and his family for putting on this event for our community.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Prince. It was a heartwarming event. Antonio's the cutest kid that you could ever imagine, and he's celebrating 10 years of being cancer-free. And every year, his family puts on this event. They've raised over $30,000 towards cancer, and so, yeah, it's just a great community event, so.
Mr. Mayor, not only is he a fantastic kid, he's one gutsy kid.
Yeah.
He got, he was, they had cold water in the hot, in the-
The dunk tank.
Dunk tank, and they were dunking him right and left. I don't know how long he lasted, but it was, it was a neat event.
Thanks. So, either Brian Beckley or staff members want to address the council before we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.